Welcome to the February 24, 2022 Palmer City School District Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Ms. Lucio.
Mrs. Brock.
Present.
Mrs. Purvis.
Present.
Mr. Christ. Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present. Unless there is an objection, we'll dispatch from the reading on the special meeting notice. Dr. Smilak's not here. So how do I run this with the live streaming?
Check here.
All right. Anyway, can you please confirm that the public portion of this meeting is being livestreamed?
Yes.
Thank you. Can you please monitor our livestream throughout the public portion of this meeting? If there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that we can, that technical difficulty can be addressed.
Yes.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, community members are welcome to attend Board of Education work sessions. However, there is not an opportunity to participate. So we are waiting for Dr. Smilak to get our bill of our future with Mr. Manteloff, who is our guest today. It's good to see you again, Mr. Manteloff.
Yeah, great to see you guys.
Yeah, did you meet everybody?
Hi.
Yeah, I did. I met, except I haven't said hi to Mr. Purvis yet.
Hi, how are you?
Good to see you again.
You too.
All right.
So why don't we wait until Mr. Smilak gets in here and then we can get started.
We're five minutes out.
Okay, I gave everyone a little write-up of my record. It's in your folder. Some of you have already met him, I don't know if he's in the room or not, so.
Can't say that again.
Yeah. Thank you, Sean.
This is Paul.
No way.
Guys, Manteloff, your brother?
Yeah, D-Man, yeah.
I've heard him on the radio.
Yeah, listen to him on T-A-M, yeah, yeah. He was, I was driving home late last night, and he was covering the, what's going on in the Ukraine. So he's mostly a sports guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he's now doing all kinds of things.
Yeah, like a sports commentator.
Yeah. Yeah, he's got my, my dream job. He gets to talk and talk for a living. Say whatever's on his mind, you know. Figure out, he's, there he is.
1:15.
There you go.
That's what I thought, too.
She told me four this morning.
Apologies.
Don't worry.
Good.
It says, you know what it says on the top of the page? 1:15.
It was noticed yesterday.
I just told you this.
I'm just telling you what Pam has on my schedule.
Yeah, I listen to Pam.
I know.
Yeah.
I'll get different English.
We're running the show.
Yeah, before 1:15, but.
No worries.
We're all ready to roll, so we're ready to start, sir.
Well, I'm glad I came early. According to my calendar. So Rick is here, and we've worked with Rick before. He is well-respected throughout the region, and you will soon find out why if you haven't been familiar with his work. But we wanted to talk through the procedures to get a levy or a bond issue, I should say, on the ballot first. But then, secondly, how we can potentially leverage some of our permanent improvement funds to borrow. Trying to make sure, Mark, you're in my head a little bit, you know, that we've done everything we possibly could to reduce millage to the extent possible. And so that would, you know, be a little bit creative in terms of what TANs or COPS could look like. And so Rick can walk us through that as well. I've told him to spare no expense. He's a little bit nervous about getting into the weeds, but I think weeds are warranted for this. So he's going to give a pretty thorough presentation. Rick?
Doctor, all right. Excellent. You're welcome, everyone. Thanks for inviting me here. As Dr. Smilak said, I've been here several times, as I've been looking at my old, my old binders. Looks like I've been here going back to 2018, talking about these kinds of things. And so happy to continue the conversation, the ongoing conversation. It's taken some twists and turns along the way, and I have a fairly good understanding from Dr. Smilak and from Sean as to where we are now. And you guys, you know, fill in any blanks if I'm saying something that is outdated information. Yeah, let me know, and I'll, I'll deal with it on the fly.
Could I give, give, just he's the, Dr. Snyder behind you.
Sure.
Absolutely, so that I can follow along, yeah, with the.
Thank you.
Work hard here. So, so what I, what I handed out is basically.
Are they not working?
No. They're mixed up.
Three V's, two.
They're out.
There's one over there.
There we go.
All right.
Wait. Oh, there we go. Here's got them. Oh, here comes Jack. Could you hold on one quick second while Jack?
Yeah, absolutely.
While Jack's coming in, since I know he knows the answers, before we get started, could you just really quickly go over what the difference between a TANs is and a COPS is and that? So just in case anybody's not 100% on the up and up on what exactly it is.
Yeah, Dr. Smilak mentioned TANs and COPS. And so, yeah, good, great to start with that, and then we'll double back around to it toward the end. But a TANs, a tax anticipation note is basically an advance against permanent improvement levy proceeds. And hello. And Palmer Schools actually did a $9.1 million tax anticipation note back in 2016. And that's basically an advance. You're, you have a PI levy in place. It's three mils nominally. The voters voted a continuing period of time, PI levy twice, once for two mils, once for one mils, three mils total. But due to House Bill 920 kind of knocking down the effective millage over time through the House Bill 920 reduction factors, you're down to 2.17 mils according to the state's DTE Form 1515. So you've got 2.17 effective mils coming in the door. And what you can do, and what you have done, is borrow against future proceeds. So these, this $9.1 million that you borrowed is being paid back solely from the PEI revenue that comes in every single year. That's the only thing that you can use. So it's called a special obligation. So if there's a default, nobody can touch your general fund, nobody can touch your buildings. The only thing they can touch is the money in Fund 003. That's it.
Okay.
It's an advance. And it only goes out 10 years. That's the maximum maturity, a maximum amortization period of this kind of debt. And so as a result, you can't borrow all that much money, you know, relative to a COPS issue. Segueing into that. So a COPS issue, very common with, with Ohio school districts, is lease purchase-based financing. COPST stands for Certificates of Participation. COPST. Participation in what? Participation in a revenue stream, rent being paid on a lease. So the way that that basically, that financial transaction basically works is you, the school district, own property, and you ground lease the property over to an entity. And that entity lease purchases that back to you. So it's a lease, lease back, and on the lease back, you're paying rent over a maximum under Ohio law of 30 years, which is significant because the tax anticipation note's a 10. COPS.
Third mark.
And, yeah, and that's a major point here because if you can stretch an existing revenue stream, like a, like a PI levy revenue, if you can stretch that out over 30 years instead of 10, you can leverage a lot more money upfront. And we're going to talk about how much money you can leverage based upon your existing PI levy revenue stream on the second page of my handout. But the, but that's the, the basic idea of a COPS issue. Now, it's, you know, it's not just the lease leaseback. Now, as Dr. Smilak warned you, get into the weeds just a little bit, and then call timeout if I'm too far in the weeds and you don't want to go there. But a COPS issue is, has the additional complexity of, of a lease, leaseback to a shell corporation, which then assigns all of its interest to a trustee bank, which then is expecting your rent. And the trustee bank says, I'm expecting all this rent from Palmer Schools. Does anybody want a piece of that action? Is I the trustee? I don't, I'm not, I don't care. I'm just a pass-through. But anybody else want, anybody else in the investing public want a piece of this Palmer Schools' action? Anybody? I'm going to sell certificates of participation in that rental stream. So I'm going to break it up and sell you certificates. You're going to securitize, the trustee is securitizing the revenue stream and selling. And it looks and feels a lot like a bond. But the security, and this is the last point, and then, and then you can pepper me with questions about anything along the way. But the last point here is that what if there's a default? And, and you don't pay the rent. What, what does the investor get? Does the investor get Sean's 003 money, like I was talking about with the tax anticipation? Does the investor get the general fund of the district? What is the investor? No. The investor gets the building that was leased and the ground and cordons it off for up to a maximum under statute of 35 years if it's a 30-year lease purchase agreement and says, you can't get on that land until I'm paid. So they get the thing. They don't get money, they don't get Sean's money. They get the thing. And that's the, the big difference between the two, one of the big differences between the two. And also because on any, in any given year, this Board of Education can choose whether to appropriate or not the money to pay the rent in that year. If you choose not to, you can. It's a subject-to-appropriation lease. And because of that, it's not debt. So I don't have to worry about, we don't have to worry about all the debt limits that I'm going to talk about in a second. It's not debt. It's, it's outside of debt because it's subject to annual appropriations. It's not a contract like a bond is to pay from year to year for 37 years. It's, it's a subject-to-annual appropriation lease. And so it's not debt. It doesn't count against your debt limitations. And that, that's going to become important later on. So thank you for putting it on a T at the outset here. Any, any questions related to what I said to kind of set the date?
Just really quickly.
Yeah.
Subject to appropriation, obviously.
Right.
Being fiscally responsible, we would like to make sure the appropriations are made every year.
Right.
If they don't.
Yeah.
If we had opted not to for fiscal caution or, you know, a dire financial situation, do they then come immediately, warranty off the property, and we're stuck?
At, until, yeah.
Until it's paid, until like the next fiscal year when you appropriate.
When you would pay it off, and then they'd say, okay, you can get back in your building again now. Now, has that ever happened in my, I've done this 27 years, and my sample size is about 100 school districts, 27 years. So it's a decent sample size. Never seen it happen on a building. Now, have I seen a default on a lease purchase in general? Yes. What do you mean, Rick? Well, it was this, back in the day, there was this thing called the National School Fitness Foundation, NSFF. And it was this, this organization that said to all the school districts around the country, you know, look, buy this weight equipment and lease purchase it. And we will pay the, it's a foundation. We're going to pay the rent for this equipment. Well, it was a Ponzi scheme, as it turned out. And so they stopped making the payments to all these school districts. And so the school districts then had the choice whether to appropriate money to pay the rent to the bank for the weight equipment and keep the weight equipment, or say, you know what? It was gravy, you know? It was nice to have that weight equipment. We wouldn't have bought the weight equipment, you know, if we, if we didn't have this money coming in from this foundation. Bank, take it. And so in, there was that one instance in my career where, where a school, where a school board or two said, you know, we're not going to appropriate, but in every other instance they have. And so as a result of that, the, the subject-to-annual appropriation, COPS financings, are fairly secure in the, in the marketplace of investors. Investors don't look at it like, oh, jeez, they might not appropriate, so I'm not going to invest in that. They see it as pretty secure.
Okay.
In fact, like if you have a, I deal with Hudson Schools. I'm working on a transaction, COPS transaction with them now. They are an AA1 rated district with Moody's. And that means that their general obligation debt, we'll talk about that in a second, is AA1 rated. Their COPS issue that I'm working on right now is AA2 rated. So it's one notch below their AA1 rating. So the point there is, is that it, there's, they don't ding you down to, into the BAA range because it's a COPS, subject-to-annual appropriation, COPS issue. It's still pretty secure. The investors view it, and they're not going to get into it unless they consider the facility to be an essential facility. And they're going, they're, they're going to pay their rent.
Yeah.
They're not going to lose their, fill-in-the-blank high school or fill-in-the-blank elementary school, you know? So anyway, did that answer the question?
Perfect. I just, I like to know all the positive effect across the board.
Right, right, yeah, we're going to, we're going to get into this, and we're going to come back to this. It's important. Anybody else have any questions about TANs and COPS?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you about the 35 years, Rick.
Yeah.
I mean, that's way off in the distance and not really something likely to ever come into play.
Right.
But since it is part of the law, 35 years, what happens? They can do this for 35 years.
Then you get it back.
Then you just get it back.
Then you get it back.
So if you can waste 35 years.
Right, that's right.
You can make out.
That's a big legal loophole there.
And the reason for.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, right, that's, that's a fair, fair question. And the, I mentioned that the law permits you to amortize the non-debt debt. Amortize the lease period over 30 years, 33, 13, 37, 5. But Rick, you said they keep it for 35. Well, the reason for that five-year difference is kind of like, it's kind of like paying the rent on an apartment in your last month. You know, what's your, what's your incentive to pay that last month's rent? You know, it's like, okay, come and get me, evict me, you know?
I move it anyways, yeah.
There's, there's.
That makes sense.
The law is creating an incentive for you to make that last year's payment. Because if you don't, they get to keep it an extra five years. That's the reason for the difference.
Yes.
Yeah.
We have great campaign fees, though. Even if we can't pay for it, in 35 years, we can use it. I think they would love that.
Right.
Hey. Just asking.
So that's, that's COPS, that's TANs. And you have a, and this is all relevant because you have a PI levy. Even if you didn't have a PI levy, you can do a COPS, you can't do a TANs, a tax anticipation deal without, without a voter-approved revenue stream. But you could do a COPS deal, Berea Schools. We did a deal for them, for the Grindstone Elementary School. We decided that we were going to take, take offline for, I think it was, elementary schools and consolidate them into one elementary school. And we determined that there would be savings associated with that into the, in the general fund and operational costs and utilities and all that kind of stuff. So we tried to calculate what that savings would be. And that became our revenue stream, if you will. So we didn't have like a voter-approved PI levy. It was just savings from administrative costs of having four elementary schools online.
Oh, wow.
And so we used that revenue stream to leverage $23, $24 million at the time. I forget. It was in the 20s. For a COPS issue. That's Grindstone. That's how Grindstone gets financed.
What, what's their Moody's rating?
Oh, boy.
They've got to be like an A.
I don't remember. Yeah, I don't remember.
They're lower than Hudson.
Uh, yes, yes, they are. What are we?
We don't have a rating, but I would guess they're an A.
We have one at that.
We have them.
Don't have a rating, that is.
We're, we're pretty close to probably an A, A, A. I don't think we're an A1.
So then with that, with that, I have two, two questions that popped up. One, if we don't have a rating, I don't know how this system works. Is this like when you don't have any debt, when you turn 18 and you have no credit score, and people are like, oh, you're dangerous?
Well, we do have a history with COPS.
So we're not going to get like dinged because we don't have this rating?
We have to go to Moody's or.
Moody's or Standard and Poor's.
They're poor, do a presentation, and then they give us a bond rating.
Okay.
And then that's, we have to sell the bonds.
You'd be surprised at the different rating agencies, how they react to different things. I mean, it's, it's probably go to Chicago versus New York because it's more open to the middle.
Gotcha.
I actually did bring, you know, trying to be loaded for bear as much as I could be abroad, your old ratings. So you did have Fitch. And it looks like in August 30, 2016, Fitch affirms Palmer CSD's COPS rating. You had COPS back in the day. You don't have any outstanding now.
Right.
At A. You're an A rating and, for the COPS. And your issuer default rating was A+. So that kind of goes along with what I was saying about the Moody's rating being one, in Hudson being one notch below. In the Fitch rating scale, you know, you're kind of A+, A-, A-. And so your COPS at A was one notch below the A+ issuer rating.
We could also price, price insurance, too, the basic.
Yes.
I mean, if it's worth the while for the.
Yeah, and the COPS, the COPS deal had insurance, yes.
That's, that's probably where they.
That's correct, yeah.
So then my second question is.
Yes.
Is there, by law, a maximum number of times you can take a TANs out on a revenue stream?
There is not a maximum number of times you can do it. Your, your limitation is more the amount that can be outstanding at any one time.
Perfect.
Which is basically one half of the expected collections over the course of 10 years, netting out that which is already committed for debt service.
Does it rely on the time when it renew, like if there's a levy renewal on the PI levy?
Yes, years are continuing. And so you don't have to worry about that. But if it were subject to renewal, absolutely, you would be limited as to when you can, how much you can borrow. Yeah, it would affect the length. It would be a five-year max as opposed to a 10-year max that you get with a continuing period of time, like, yes.
I came in late, but ours are subject to 920, our collections.
Our collections.
The PI levy, yes.
For the PI levy.
It's on the yellow sheet.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't.
Right.
He put it on there.
Right, yes, and I, so I guess.
So we don't have ratings from the Moody's or anything like that?
Not now, because all of your debt has, well, the rated debt has, has been paid off. So they withdraw the ratings.
Do we need that before?
No, you do not.
Does this help if we have it?
No.
It won't affect the rate or whatever, nothing?
It will affect the rate, but, but the way it would, the, the rating would transpire is after the voters would approve the bond issue. At that point, the team would put together a rating presentation to, to Moody's and/or S&amp;P. Fitch is not really so much in the mix anymore with respect to this kind of debt. But to either S&amp;P or Moody's, a presentation would be developed and then presented, either in person or telephonically, and the decisions about which rating agency to go to, one or the other or both, and whether to go in person or have a video conference, have them come here. Those decisions would be largely guided by your, your underwriter and municipal advisor. And so thus far, you've been working with Stiefel Nicholas as your underwriter, Michelle Hillstrom, and then I think Michael Purcella with Suttsina and Associates as municipal advisor has been helping out. And so, so that, those individuals would advise on which one to go to. And so it would be an after the fact, after the election situation. But it would be critical to establish what the rating is because then that's going to determine in large part the interest rate scale that you get. Higher the rating, the lower the, the lower. So a lot of effort is put into that rating agency presentation. Just went through that with, with Hudson. We've full-court press.
Did you, did you go there or bring them?
No, things kind of stopped after COVID hit. Back in, even before that, I was going to Chicago maybe six times a year.
Yeah.
And, and it was, it was only in cases where we, where we thought that we were quote-unquote like on the bubble. Like if we, we were like right between like an A1 and an A2, and we really wanted to make the case for an A1, then we would, we would go there in person oftentimes. But, but that said, you know, I've worked with Lake local schools out in Wood County. $36 million bond issue for a new elementary school passed in November. I just closed that deal this week. We did a telephonic rating agency presentation, and we got an upgrade. Over the, over the phone.
When I was with the city, we, we were upgraded a couple times.
Okay.
It was, it was worth it.
Did you go, did you make a physical presentation?
Well, we used to go, we used to go to New York.
Yeah, right.
Then we started going to Chicago because they were a little bit more open-minded about this side of the Alleghenies.
Same. Yeah, understood.
Than the New York people.
That's been my experience also.
Yeah, they, they upped us a couple times.
Yeah, good, good, yeah. Yeah, so that's, that's the rating piece, yeah.
I'm probably ready to get in the outline. I hate to rush things along.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Oh.
We probably have it used up by 5:15, so.
5:15, ah, okay. All right, then, what I'll do, I'll, I'll tell you what you got in front of you, a little piece of paper. And then, and then really start to focus on the, on the second page, really, is where the rubber meets the road here. So this, this is kind of an overview, just so you have it as a desk reference. Kind of everything you need to know, numbers-wise, debt-wise, millage-wise, on one piece of paper. So the first thing is your assessed valuation. You got a nice increase, $2.6 billion. That's going to come in handy later on at the bottom of this page. What's your millage? Well, I laid it out there. Your operating millage, I'm sorry.
Can you just correct yourself because you said billion? I don't want the public to think that we have $2.6 billion.
It is assessed valuation.
Oh, I thought you meant a tax revenue coming in.
No, no.
The increase, okay, good, because I was going to say.
Yeah, no.
I didn't want them to think that they heard.
I think it would be okay.
Who needs this money, right?
So the AV, that's, my apologies, that's short for assessed valuation. That's your item number one, the, the tax valuation of the property, which for residential is about 35% of market value. But that's the assessed for taxation value, $2.6 billion. And that's a, that's a lot for Cuyahoga County or anywhere. So the millage, I, as mentioned by Mr. Ruda, the, on this page, I have not just what the voters approved, but also the effective millage on there because you get the millage knocked down due to House Bill 920 as assessed valuation rises due simply to appreciation and not to new construction. You see in item B, there's your PI levy there, three mils worth, effective at 2.17. And that's going to be important later on. So do you have any general obligation debt out there? No, you do not have any general obligation debt out there. Tax anticipation notes, talked about that. You still got a little bit left. You got to pay that through December 1, 2026, and you're paying about a million bucks a year. I want to keep that, you keep that in mind because that's going to be an important point later on. You're still paying that off, about a million bucks a year-ish through December 1, 2026. You have some relatively small amount of energy conservation, these purchase obligations. The last payment's going to be in fiscal 2023. Sean, what's that, maybe July of this year, maybe?
It's, I think it's July 20, July 22.
22, so this year, July 22, which is in fiscal '23, and you can see there, it's only $114,000. So that's, so that's, that's not debt, but those are your lease purchase obligations. So those, that's what you have currently outstanding. You used to have a lot, now you don't. So next point, segues into the next point. You got a lot of leeway under your existing debt limitations. So your 9% of assessed valuation direct debt limit is $237 million. What's the significance of that? Well, if you get the, if you get, go to the ballot for $237 million or anything less than that, it's, it's a no-brainer to get to the ballot. You don't have to jump through any hoops. You just go to the ballot and ask, and they say yes or no. And if, if the bond issue, the amount of money you're seeking is over that amount, then we have to jump through a few hoops, and I'll get to that in a second. The nine tenths of 1% of assessed valuation, that's for energy conservation-related unvoted debt. So you've got $23 million worth there. Your credit card limit is $2.6 million. So that's basically if you, if, you know, if Dr. Smilak and Sean wanted to go out tomorrow and, and fix a leaky roof, you know, you've got $2.6 million worth of credit. You could say, you know, like Berea did, and I'll bring them up again. Their treasurer said, I need $3 million. I said, when? And they said, I need it by next Friday. And so it's like, oh, okay, we can do that because we have the, the means available, debt means available to us. And you've got 2.6 available to you. The 4% of assessed valuation, that goes to certain election-related state approvals to get. valuation, that goes to certain election-related state approvals to get to the ballot. Anything over 105 million, we got to start jumping through some hoops. But those hoops are more perfunctory. So let's go, let's go to the meat of this, of this discussion now, and that's, and that's this, that the, the proposed projects and the costs that I have been shown by Dr. Smiley and by Sean, those are big numbers associated. 392 million plus LFI's, 372 million, 365 million, and 372 million dollars. They're big, these are big projects. And so they're well over 237 million dollars, which is the 9% limitation.
Those are the numbers I sent to you guys when we got the prices from them.
Yeah, so those, those numbers are big. And so, okay, Rick, well, how do, what are we going to do? You just told us you were capped at 237, but there's exceptions. Aha, let's talk about the exceptions. So up until a couple of weeks ago, when this new assessed valuation of 2.6 billion dollars came out, I was looking, I was following, tracking whether you guys would qualify under 133.06E of the Ohio Revised Code, if you're scoring at home, for special needs status approval. So you apply to the state government, state superintendent of public instruction, and say, we're special, we have special needs here, we need to go over this 9% limitation. And they'll, and the first question that they ask is, out of the statute that I just cited, well, okay, we're concerned about your, you know, the, your tax revenue coming in, so you need to show us that the, the real property growth in your district has been at least 1.5% per year for the last 10 to 12 years. And if you can show me that, that you hit that mathematical target, we'll talk. To date, you were not able to meet that threshold. But because of this new assessed valuation based upon our preliminary unofficial calculations, you do. We're like 2.0 something percent. And I, and I had my paralegal and I both, you know, we recalculated, recalculated. We couldn't believe our eyes, but, and it's unofficial, but it looks like you guys will qualify mathematically for special needs status approval, which is great if it turns out to be official. When will it become official, Rick? In, in like May or June, the Department of Taxation finally updates all of the assessed valuations from around the state. They catch up to the counties basically in May or June, and they come out with these Form DTE13s. And until those DT Form 13s come out, nothing's official. But once they are official, we'll jump on it and we'll confirm with ODT and with the Ohio Department of Education that you meet that mathematical qualification. And then if that's the case, the rest of it is pretty perfunctory.
Rick, can I ask a question? You know, it's 2.6 billion dollars.
Yes.
I expect it to go down because that's how it always happens. How far can it go down when we still need special needs?
Yeah, that will, we'd have, we'd have to do some modeling because the spreadsheet that, that we use for this, that is dictated by the Ohio Department of Education, you know, it has 10-year tabs and 11-year tabs and 12-year tabs, and we'd have to do some modeling to fully answer your question.
What would it matter anyway? I mean, we'd be.
If we don't qualify for special needs.
It, it wouldn't matter this year. It, in the future, it might, but probably not until another triennial or sexennial. So you'd have a couple of years to play with probably is the way these spreadsheets work. It's a fair question. But I think to your point, if it, if we qualify for special needs status approval, yay, this year, and get to the ballot on that basis, and then next year we don't qualify, if that's your question, doesn't matter. We're good.
So, Rick.
Once we get that piece of paper, we're good.
I think, correcting from where this would really matter is we wouldn't have to tack on. Remember last time we had the pond and then tacked on a permanent improvement? It was one vote for both. We were clear about it's 6.5 million for both, but then some people, like I remember you texting me and said, oh my God, people are thinking we're trying to sneak in a PI too. And it was difficult to explain why there were two different options. So this, this eliminates that need.
Yes.
Is there discretion for these numbers or are these solid numbers?
Well, the, these, these are unofficial.
No, no, I mean, when you put it to the board or whatever you're, is there any discretion on their department? They have to take it in black and white?
At the state level? Yeah, at the state level, it's, they have dictated what the spreadsheet looks like, and you hit return on the spreadsheet and the number pops up, and it is what it is.
Okay.
Yeah, fair question, fair question. But yes, as Dr. Smiley said, that, you know, this, this is a highly relevant portion of this, of this presentation and discussion because last time around, you had the 271 million dollar bond issue and a PI levy tacked on. Why? Because you needed another 25, 30 million to get everything done that you wanted to get done. Now, if you qualify for special needs, three out of these four options can get met just by, by looking at that 386 million dollar number. You don't need any PI levy to leverage that into a COPS issue. You can just ride the bond issue should you so choose. And now, as Dr. Smiley said, it kind of, that can reduce any confusion about what's going on here. I thought this was a bond issue for buildings, why are you trying to sneak in a PI levy? No, actually, no, but we, we kind of need that because of debt limitations. And so we needed that, that additional revenue stream to leverage a COPS issue. But then now, now I just, 16, 17 seconds, now I lost people. Just by, by that alone, as opposed to just a straightforward bond issue.
Kind of what he's, what he was asking for, you said that these are preliminary numbers and they won't come out until later. Is there a possibility that they won't come in at this and we won't be at this? Or is it pretty much this is what it is?
That's my question.
Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, that's pretty much the, this is, this is what it is, but I can't say it's, it's official until they, until I see the numbers pop. But the, the numbers that we have used for modeling purposes are based upon the county's numbers. So unless the county changes its numbers, Cuyahoga County changes its numbers with respect to assessed valuation, they're going to be good to go. Sorry, Sean, I misinterpreted your question. But the.
I have one question. Is there any way you can go back and compare some of our, our other three-year assessments to see how much we lost in the year? Yeah, I mean, that would give us some kind of indication of how much.
We got half a percent of a buck, half a percent plus of a buffer.
We went up like 420 million or 425 billion dollars in the last assessment. Definitely 2.2, 2.6 something.
And I was just curious to see how many of those were challenged and how much it dropped. We could get some kind of a feel-good number.
I like that idea, Jeff.
I think we have, you know, my take is I think we have a Plan A, and, and we do have Plan Bs, you know, to go to the ballot this fall.
If we saw a big drop or something.
Yeah, right. But the Plan A looks to be kind of out of the gate. And I can show you actually after the meeting, in the interest of time, I can show you what all of those assessed valuations were without Sean having to dig. I have them right here on this spreadsheet. Yeah, so they're right.
You really did come loaded for that.
So, yeah, so you can, you can see where we are. And you can see current versus the last, last time Jenny Mace, my paralegal, and I ran this. This was, this was last year. You guys were at 0.0, let's see, 0.02. That was last year. And, and now you are at 2.053. And once you're over 1.5%, all of a sudden, what you do in order to achieve that number that I underlined on the page is you project out what your assessed valuation is going to look like 10 years from now, based upon what? Based upon the average rate of growth of the last 10 years, that 2.053% that I just mentioned. So what's your AV going to look like? And then you multiply that projected figure by 12%. Not 9, 12%. And that's how you, that's how the sausage gets made. Don't ask me why it's 12. I don't know. That's just, that's just how the sausage got made. But it's nice because it, it brings into play three out of these four options. And then we can talk about the fourth option, the more expensive option too, and how we might meet that without a, a PI levy tack on.
That one's losing in the public polls anyway.
Which one is it?
6-2.
Okay. The, oh, the six, the six elementary schools and the two.
That, and then this is, we'll have a work session to show you this next week. But that one right now actually has more, more strongly disagree. Like, that's the only one that where the strongly disagrees outweigh the strongly agrees, which I was surprised because last two November.
24,000 people said yes.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, there was a pretty good number of folks that voted yes for that.
Now, the other, the other nice thing, Dr. Smiley mentioned one thing. The other nice thing about being able to do everything that we would like to do with the big bond issue and not tack on a PI levy for COPS purposes to get the other 20, 25 million that we need to complete the project, is that a voted bond issue for an Ohio school district is like, is like the most secure financial investment known to humankind. And so, you know, if the more, and, and that's relevant because that, for the taxpayers, that's going to mean the lowest interest rate that you can get and, and also the lowest transactions cost that you're going to, I mean, on a GO deal, a general obligation deal, a voted or approved general obligation deal, which is what this would be, I mean, yeah, the, the transaction participants, this bargain, bargain basement transactions cost and the interest rates, the best you're going to get. So we want to drive as much as we can into that bucket because for the tax, from the taxpayer's perspective, it's going to be the cheapest debt, not the subject to the appropriation lease that is a notch down on the rating, and so the interest rate's going to be higher because there's more risk. Transactions costs are huge.
If I'm understanding this correctly, it's the cheapest debt. However, it's still on the bond issue, which is going to increase the village of what they're going to pay. Whereas if we're paying off the COPS or TANs, they don't see that.
Ah, yes, if, that is, that's correct. And that's page two. It's a good segue, good segue. So we, we, page two, if you would, if you would. And, you know, just the last couple of things on page one, I do mention in item B, as in boy, the 133.06I exception with ELPP, that's our Plan B. For some reason, special needs doesn't work for us. We've, we've used this exception before. What is this exception? Basically, it basically says if you want to get over 9%, and if you are working with the commission, Bill Prentissel and et al. and the commission, and you can go on the ballot with whatever you need to participate in a, in an OFCC program, plus you can go above that to the tune of 50% of your local share. And that's what you guys did the last two times around, and that's why you're capped at 271, is because we were going up as high as we could to participate in the, in the program, the LPP program with the commission. And then we took a look at our local share, multiply that by 0.5, and we tack that on top. That's how we got to 271. That's way over 9%. That's how we got there. But I'm hoping that we can get there in another way because we'll have more breathing room if we get special needs status approval. But I just want to remind you that that's another way to do it. That's our Plan B. Now, to the, to the other page, and we've covered a lot of this, financing is using existing PI revenue, as you see in F-TAC, tax anticipation notes is on the list. Lease purchase obligations is, is the next, next one up from the bottom. But before I get there, I want to explore with Sean just the other day, and Dr. Smiley, what's our PI revenue stream look like? And what are we using it for? Just for background purposes. And so we're getting about 5.9 million dollars annually from the 2.17 effective mils of PI levy. And then we have a current balances of the end of last month of 4.3 million dollars. And we're trying to hit a target of having a $1 million in the bank. Don't want to go too far below that in case we have an emergency, you know, of Jim Roof Falls in or something like that. We want to have some money in the bank that we can use for that. So we want a little bit of a cushion there. And also, what are you using it for right now? About 400,000 for technology, 300,000 for textbooks. When last, you know, I, I prepared for these, you know, these kinds of presentations, there was also a decent amount being spent for buses. But I am informed that your bus fleet's in pretty good shape now, and so you don't necessarily have a lot of money being set aside currently for buses that were being paid out of PI. Yes.
Do we have though, a bus rotation that we would have to figure in a certain amount of money every couple?
About a third was what it was last year.
Okay, so there is still, do you know how?
200,000.
200,000, okay.
And so, you know, on the, on the topic of buses, you'll, you'll see in items E1 and E2, basically what I did there is I, I said, all right, we have a, we want to leverage a stream of revenue, this PI revenue stream. We want to take it out to the legal max 30 years. And I'm using 5% because Sean was using 5% in his millage calculations. It's a nice conservative number. The Lake Local School District deal that I just referred to, $36 million, that was a GO deal. We got that at 3.5, 5%. I think 5% is reasonable for a, for a COPS issue, reasonably conservative. I took out 1.3 million. This is an important topic for, for future makes. So off the top of the 5.9 million coming in, I took off 1.3. Why? Because you're going to need that 1.3 million dollars, which is about a half mil, as your AV assessed valuation is 2.6 billion. So a half mil, that's 1.3 million. And so the commission is going to say, if, when you're up for CFAP, Classroom Facilities Assistance Program, when you're actually going to get state money. Right now, ELPP, Expenditure Local Partnership Program, you're not getting a dime yet from the state. You're building credit by doing things according to the Ohio Design Manual and stuff like that. But, but if you want state dollars, they're going to say, fine, you have to set aside a half mil and put it into Fund 034. That's your classroom facilities maintenance fund for 23 years. Now, the nice thing about you guys is that unlike certain other school districts that don't have a continuing period of time PI levy in place, you guys do, and it's well over a half a mil. And so you can just say to the commission, when it's time for CFAP, when it's time for the state money, you can say, okay, fine, no problem. We'll just, we'll just siphon off 1.3 million that was going to go into 003, into the PI fund, and we'll put it into Fund 034, the Classroom Facilities Fund, check the box, get the state money. So it's, 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 it's an important piece to kind of make sure that we have that in mind here as we try to calculate how much we might leverage. Because we could leverage it all. And I made that calculation. And if we just carved out 700 grand or so for technology and textbooks and left the rest 5.2 million, I asked myself the question, all right, if we're not going to set aside the 1.3 for the half mil maintenance levy requirement, what could we leverage? About 80 million bucks. I got the spreadsheet, you know, here if anybody wants to see. We could get about 80 million bucks, you know, if, if we wanted to for 30 years at 5%, 5.2 million dollars a year, assumed annual revenue. But again, that, that's, that to me doesn't, it doesn't take into account this half mil maintenance. You're going to want that half mil maintenance.
So that's how we get down to the 54s?
That's, yeah, that's, that's how you leverage that state money. And I, and I ran into a situation where, you know, school district, it's hard, you know, it did ELPP, it did all its middle schools in ELPP, and then, and then it came up for CFAP, and they needed, they wanted the state money. The state said, where's your half mil maintenance? Oh, don't worry about it. We'll put a half mil maintenance levy on the ballot. And, and they did it, half mil. And it failed, and it failed more than once. Why? Because, because of a, of a situation where I want to recall, it was, they expelled the star football quarterback because of a drinking issue or something like that. And it became a big hot button political issue. And it was, it was in the fall, and the, and the election was in November, and the half mil maintenance levy got trounced because of that. The politics, you don't know what the politics are going to be at any particular time.
Rick, we use restorative circles here, so it won't.
Say what?
We use restorative circles.
Okay.
Half mil was by itself.
Half mil by itself.
Just a half.
Couldn't pass. Can I get, can I do some rough math here?
Yeah.
So that, that top, let's just use rough.
Okay.
So we were at eight mils, it was really 7.93 or something, for 393 million. So let's say eight mils is 400 million dollars. So that's what? One mil is 50 million dollars in, in that rough calculation? The cost.
Yeah.
The 7.9, so the highest one was 393 million dollars of the four. And that calculated out to 7.93 or 7.95.
Eight-five, yeah.
So let's round up and say it was eight mils for 400 million. That, that's what you gave me.
So one mil equals 50 million dollars.
So one mil equals 50 million. So if we're coming down 59 million or even 54 million, it subtracts a mil off of it. So instead of eight, it's seven, which.
Unless you're going to assess valuation and increase it. Does it affect that?
Say that now.
We didn't hear you.
Of the, your assessed valuation. Your assessed valuation increase will affect that millage as far as dropping it.
Well, no, Sean already counted that in there.
Oh, did he?
That's with the new assessed valuation.
Okay.
But I'm also with a 5% interest rate.
Yeah, that's tremendous.
So it's, so I mean, what Rick's showing us right here is it's a mil. We can subtract a mil if we do this.
Yeah.
COPS program.
That's right. And not, not go to the ballot and ask orders for an additional revenue stream. You already have a revenue stream. The question at the board level and administrative level is how are you gonna prioritize the use of those funds? That's always the question. And so, you know, do you wanna, yeah, how much do you wanna to keep for buses? Option one there doesn't take into account anything for buses, but option two, I throw in 300 grand. And as you can see, just by throwing in 300 grand for buses per year, I've taken, I've taken the maximum COPS issue from 59 and a half million down to 54.9. By throwing in buses. So, you know, you gotta figure out how much do you want to reserve for the half mil maintenance? How much do you want to reserve for textbooks and buses? And then ask the question, now what's the resulting revenue stream? What do we got free? And then we can leverage that into a 30-year COPS. And that's what I tried to do here on the page for you. But ballpark numbers are taken off the bottom mil. Yeah, that's right.
So when you go back to the BRIA example.
Yeah.
They actually leveraged some of their operating.
Yes. Yep, yep.
Oh, man.
That sounds dangerous.
I'm nervous about cutting the PI down too low, you know.
But I like the second.
So wait, I have a question though. Does this, if we can't pay, we still, we owe till 2026 on the PI, the TANs we already have, right?
That is correct.
So does this, are we allowed to take the COPS out if the TAN, if it's already encumbered by the TANs?
This board, I'm sorry. The, I, what I, what I did and I stated as an assumption because it's an important point, is you've got like $4 million left or so to pay. You've got December of this year, 22, 3, 4, 5, 6, 2, 3, 4, 5, five years, yeah, about a million a year. And so I, you know, and you got 4.3 million dollars right in the, in the tank right now. And so this is just back of the envelope mathematics. But I was just kind of assuming for, for back of the envelope mathematics, that you were just gonna use the existing resources to pay off the TANs and everything else was gonna be okay to use for the COPS issue. But, you know, we're gonna move dials and tweak things.
Is there a, I'm just thinking, you pay off a car, there's a period of time before, you know, they release your title, this happens, all of this. Is there enough time between what we would need to do this and like with the ballot and stuff to get it paid off? Get everything released and be able to take out the COPS in terms to line it up with the levy?
Yeah.
The, the COPS issue is not going to be dependent necessarily on the paydown of anything that you have existing. It's going, in the sense that, legally. And so it's just, it's gonna be a, a matter of prioritizing the use of funds.
Got it.
And that's, that's, that's your job. And then the finance, the rest of the finance team, Michelle Hillstrums and Michael Purcell's of the world are gonna do some modeling, spreadsheet modeling. And say, all right, if we do a, you know, $50 million COPS, how's it gonna work? How are we gonna tweak that to make sure that we're gonna actually meet the payments, the lease payments in those first three, first five years? When, when funds are a little bit tight because we have those TANs outstanding. So what they, you know, so again, to dive into the weeds, 30 seconds, it won't take long. There will be, they'll probably issue the, the debt at, or the, or the COPS, as the case may be, at a significant original issue premium. That's commonly done. So you're paying more for the existing par. And so that, that original issue premium that you get gets deposited in, in essentially a bond retirement fund and is used to pay debt service in those first few years, up to three years worth of interest over the course of the, from the time that the debt is issued. So that's not, we did that, we did 2 million bucks of extra in like local.
Long way to say we're okay.
So, yeah, we'll find a way. We'll tweak it. We'll find a way, but yes.
So basically you take 50, 55 million dollars without going to, to a bond, to, to the ballot?
Taking, taking off, taking off basically a mil, going that, going down that road while still leaving 1.3 million for the half mil maintenance and a million for textbooks and buses and technology.
So, can I jump in here too?
Yeah.
The other piece is, and remember we, we talked about this or I explained it when I sent that email. That was without a PLA, that was without auditoriums and pools. So just again, as an example, if we went 4-1-1, you figure you're gonna want auditorium and a pool, at least in a high school. That's nine million. PLA is 10% of whatever the construction was, so that'd be 38 million, 37 million. So you're at, you're at.
We're still at the same, but we, we got that.
We got everything we wanted and it stayed at that same cost.
Without adding it to the.
Because then the other question, and we don't have to answer this tonight, but we need to start thinking about it, is are we one ballot? And we go all in and this is the whole district and we're gonna build blank new buildings? Or do we want to look at a lower millage and split? And we'll have a very strong feeling on that, but that's not my decision. You know, along those lines, Rick.
Yeah.
Because you've worked in this. My understanding is the size of the ballot, the size of the millage really, unless it's some ridiculous number, like eight and six, it isn't gonna move the needle. You're gonna pass or you're gonna fail based on people who want to vote for against the boundary.
I think even four and eight, you're at the same, you're at the same ballpark.
Would that, from what you've seen, be accurate?
Yeah.
I would say generally, yes. There are some districts, and as many of you know, I was on the Board of Education and Chair of the Finance Committee of the Rocky River City School District. And so there, we would not go above 4.9 mils. As, as it relates to operating in PI, not necessarily a bond issue, so I admit. But my point in bringing that up is that in some communities, there are certain numbers that are kind of magical, historical, you know.
Psychological.
We don't have those here.
Don't go above that or.
Our goal is point one.
Yes. We have, we have, we have, we have something on the ballot now.
But, but you know, as it relates to this point, you know, some thought ought to be given, you know, as my brother Dennis would say, let it marinate. Now, that's his radio. Let it marinate. So one thing to let marinate is, you know, if you, if you come out, depending upon what's selected, at maybe 7.45 mils is what Sean had calculated for this $372 million option, the four pre-Ks and the one and the one. So that's at 7.45. You know, maybe, maybe you want to get that to 6.9. Put a six in front of it instead of a seven in front of it. And how do you get there from here? Well, you don't do $50 million worth of COPS, you do, you know, 25, 30 million dollars with the COPS. And so you're able to get, get the bond issue size down to 6.9.
Wouldn't that be going from 50 million to 100 million?
And.
Wouldn't the COPS be higher?
Yeah, I feel like you just. Well, I guess what I was saying is that if you.
If we were at a seven mil.
To get it below seven.
If you were at 7.45 and you wanted to drop it a mil, now you're 6.45 with your existing resources. What I was suggesting is maybe not go the full mil, but maybe, maybe go.
Oh, I see.
Go to 6.9.
But we're not really at 7.45 anyway. We're really at 8.45 if you include a PLA and.
Oh, if you gave. Right, right, yeah, that's, that's true. That's true.
Yeah, but even at that, at that point, you could come down to, if it's at eight, you could go down to 7.9 because you're still gonna be in the sevens then and have less of a debt burden from that.
It's a seven mil.
Right. It would just help, it would just give us a little.
I mean, from everything I've seen, I'm seeing a 7.9. But that's.
What's that per $100,000?
You take that 10 to $35.
Huh?
7.9, that's $35.
Divide by 12.
Any millage 10 to 35 is what.
Divide and then divide that by 12 months. That's, that's your monthly. $23 per $100,000 of your house. And of course, luckily, everything's way through the roof in the last valuation.
I was gonna say, because that's, that's. That's 40, 46 for my house. Which is about what I was, I mean, to have brand new school also.
I mean, I agree. That, that 50 bucks a month to a family?
I agree.
I'm not saying we shouldn't do it because I think, I think we gotta go all in. I think this is our shot. It's a gubernatorial election. I think we go Plan B. Here's what's gonna happen, not only in.
It's not really Plan B. It's.
Right. Like, here's what we're gonna do, not, not win it.
So they have 23.
Passes or fails, but we're gonna do it anyway. Yeah.
I didn't, I think it was Dr. Smilik said.
What's that?
He said it was 23 bucks.
23 bucks a month on a $100,000.
On a $100,000, yeah. Per $100,000. So do your house, Cindy.
Okay, Mark and Cindy, don't do your, yeah, you live in South Park, stop.
That's the 23.
Jack, do your house.
Jack's like, that could be a lot.
It's prob, I'm probably the, the lowest in my guess, it's 197,000 and I'm in Parma Heights in a little ranch.
It's, it's.
I'm like 2/5.
It's a good chunk of change.
2/49.
New neighborhood, Stacey, happy now?
Well, if we all wanted to sell, we're all real happy.
Except we gotta buy it.
So I think we're kind of running out of time. People, from point, are you here on your GEL sheet?
The, let's see, the, so the timeline, yes. Okay. So if you're looking at a November 8 election, then kind of backing up from there, I'll just go from the bottom up. The 90-day election's going to be essentially irrelevant because you're gonna have to have everything done by 98 days before the election. That's August 2. Because state, the final state filings have to be made by that date. So August 2 is effectively your deadline and then Sean can just tootle over to the Board of Elections at some point over the next eight days and file things with the Board of Elections. So that means then to make everything work well, in June, you would adopt the first of the two necessary resolutions in July. You would adopt the second one and then everything would be done by that August 2 deadline. And I put OFCC-related action on there. I reached out to Bill Prentissel. I haven't heard back from him yet. With respect to OFCC-related deadlines, I understand from Dr. Smilik that there's an April 22, maybe?
Well, yeah, I've gotta ask Bill too because they're, looking through my emails just to make sure I was right. At one point I received April 14th. At a second time I received April 22nd.
Okay.
We've used April 22nd and we have a board meeting on the 21st, which gave us the time that would be when we would approve.
Okay.
So I'll double check with him.
Okay.
The more recent answer was April 22nd.
Okay.
I have a question. The B. June 22nd or June of 2022.
Yes, right.
We would have, in theory, by that time, the special needs status official by that first resolution?
That's a good question. The answer to that question is no. The, what we would do, that would be the first filing. We would, we would take that resolution. There would be actually, there's two resolutions if we go the special needs route and we probably will. There's resolution number one, if you will, that'll, that will go to the county for purposes of certifying the ballot millage. Then there's another resolution that would be adopted at the same time, which you didn't do the, the last time around because special needs wasn't in the mix. But it would be a special needs resolution. I'll take that one to the state government.
Okay.
And to kick off the process of, of obtaining special needs status approval. That's the 120-day deadline that you see of July 11, 2020. That's that initial paperwork that I'm gonna have to file with them in order to keep this option alive. And then the second deadline then is, is August 2. I gotta file everything by August 2. And then between, the theory is, and it's worked out, they're, they're really good down there in Columbus. Between the August 2 and August 10, which is the 90-day deadline, they'll make, they'll give you the piece of paper saying you're approved. So that, by the 90th day before the election, which is the Board of Elections deadline, you know whether you're good to go or not. That's the reason for the eight-day difference. So that you, they have a little bit more than a week to finalize their paperwork.
Could I ask too, because I know we're getting tight on time, can you talk more about, so then they're gonna give us a check for $137 million?
Ah, yes.
And how do we explain that and what are the options with that?
Okay, right. So this, as, as I understand it, and then correct me if I'm wrong, based upon what I see here, we're, we're going the whole hog here.
Possibly.
Possibly, possibly. Not just like, it's not a one building. I mean, this is, we're talking about significant effort here. And we're doing it on our own at first with our own money, with, that we, that we're gonna borrow. And we're gonna establish credit, ELPP credit, Expedited Local Partnership Program credit. And then when we're up for CFAP, as Dr. Smilik said, the state government's gonna say, all right, how much credit do you accumulate? And how much is your local share? And if your, the credit that you have accumulated exceeds the local share at the time that you're up for CFAP, you've paid too much money. And the state's gonna say, all right, we'll, we'll chip in now, our share, and we'll write you a big check. And so the, what do you do with the big check is the question. And you're not gonna get that until you're up for CFAP. Answer, you could put it in the bond retirement fund in Fund 002 and use it to pay, pay down debt obligations that you have incurred. Or.
Are there arbitrage requirements on this?
There will be arbitrage requirements along the way on all of it.
Oh, that's a figure.
That is correct, yes.
You're not allowed, you're not allowed to earn more interest than the debt you, so if you have 5%, a lot, in the olden days, when I first started this business, you would take a million dollars, some communities would take a million dollars and they'd get it for 2% interest. And they would invest it for 14% interest or whatever in the old, and then they'd make money. The federal government closed that gap and I love that. But that was a big thing. A lot of school districts and they, they use that as cash flow. And they, they closed it up in 86, I think it was.
And we haven't had to worry about that much after the Great Recession. Because, you know, treasures have been getting like that much in investment returns. It's negative arbitrage. But interest rates are rising and so, you know, we'll have to think about that. We'll have to worry about that. There are exceptions to, to all of those rules and we'll find ways, our tax department will find ways to maximize your investments without going over. Closest to the price without going over. We'll, we'll figure that out. As interest rates rise, that will become an issue. Yes?
Quick question. Bond issues are unlike levies, correct if I'm wrong, where the millage that you vote on isn't necessarily what you're going. It can be adjusted to up to pay it down faster or if you pay it off. So if you took that, what I'm saying is the money that you give back, could that be put back on the loan to adjust the millage down?
Yes.
In order to give a tax break after you get the money back? So people said, okay, yeah, we were paying an extra $70 a month for this. Now we've paid it down and now we're only paying 30, so we got a tax break. Can that, could you do that?
I, yeah, I hope the cameras are rolling. That's, that's perfect. What you just said there, that can be done. Effectively what we did, you know, in Rocky River, you know, we, we put a million dollars back to the, back into the bond retirement fund. You know, basically gave it, we gave it back and used it for debt service. So we can, you can reduce millage all in one lump sum, you know, for a couple of years, basically a tax holiday. Or you can stretch that out. If it's a big number, stretch that out over a longer period of time and reduce the millage a little bit less over a longer. You have options at that point. If you want to put it in the bond retirement fund and use it for debt service retirement, yes. You could, and Dr. Smilik and Sean and I were talking about this just the other day. You know, there, we do have a ruling, if you will, from the State Auditor's Office that, as backed up by stat, state statute, that would permit you to, to use all or a portion of that, that reimbursement check for PI purposes to put it in a Fund 004 project fund and use it for, for voter-approved purposes, whatever the, whatever's on the ballot. And that will help you draft that. Anything within that purpose clause, you can use that money for. Some school districts have, have done that. Zanesville Schools and others, Edgerton, I think, have done that.
We could, if, if we wanted to, I'm not saying we wouldn't, but if we wanted to make a, a promise or commitment, we could say, or would it be more believable or more palpable or more concrete? If we said, we'll take that, we'll deposit that in PI and we'll look at knocking off a PI levy. Is that legal?
But we have to wait till the cap, do we have to wait till the cap is paid off?
Taking off a current operating levy?
No, a PI levy.
PI levy.
Because we, so you've got 135 million dollars. I mean, if we're getting 5.9 now, I mean, that's 25 years worth of. we're getting five point nine now, I mean, that's twenty-five years' worth of PI money, we can invest it too and, you know, make it grow that way. And, and so that would be the commitment, yeah, you're going to pay this, but we commit to you, we're going to knock at least one mill off your taxes going forward because we're getting all this PI money.
Yeah, legally, I guess the nuanced question is, you have a voter-approved PI levy, two of them, for totally three mils for a continuing period of time. Can you, the board decide at any point that you want to levy less than the voter-approved amount to accomplish what you're talking about? Answering, yes, you can, just Cloverleaf, I did that with Cloverleaf, kind of sorted the same thing, but the board said, you know, we just, we have all this money coming in from the pipeline, you know, we're going to dial, we're just going to dial down, you know, the mileage, we're just going to choose to levy less than the voters have approved, and you can do that.
Can you dial it back up after a period of time?
Well, you'd have to, no, you'd have to go to the voter.
Well, no, what he said, you can dial it down and say, we're not going to charge you this, this extra mill, but then when that money, when that PI money runs out, we can dial it back up.
Right.
There's also.
Right.
Or if something happens, you know, catastrophic. The years that the bond issue is out.
Yeah.
There'll be new construction. Every time there's new construction, the bond retirement cover will grow. So there's going to be at the, at the end of this, there'll be surplus money that could be kicked back in, into that, I've seen it happen.
We're paid off, you can use the extra money to pay it off earlier, going back to Berea, because it's right down the street, you know, Ryan DeZoni out there, where we're reaching the end of the, of the bond repayment, we had a lot of extra money, and so, you know, we just, we just decided to pay up, pay off debt early.
That's smart.
Than in Poland, you know, and other places, just pay it off early.
Do we know, do we have, do we know where we are in line?
No. I mean, they don't, they won't commit, that's the frustrating part.
Yeah, Rick, how long does it take?
Yes.
From, we pass and we start and we're paying all this stuff, till we get, we qualify for CFM out from the state and they write us our nice big check?
That's what she just asked, we don't know.
Yeah, that's a good question, and, and so that's, it's unknown.
Oh, okay, yeah.
They will, they won't commit to that.
They won't commit.
Ever. Because there's just too many variables, they don't know who's asking for money, they don't know how much money's going to be appropriated. They commit to paying you back, but they won't commit to that.
Do you, I mean, do you have like a wild guess, three years, five years, eighty-two years?
Based on what you've seen.
Yeah, what's, what's Bill been telling you guys?
Nothing. He, I mean, he won't, he won't give you any type of estimation.
And the thing is, is Bill, Bill Prentisal, OFCC rep, great guy, and, and all the, and his colleagues. There was a period of time where, where folks who were making those kinds of representations about when you might be up for CFAP got burned by it, because the state budget money didn't come through enough, or a bunch of bond issues passed that, that required state money more than they expected, uh-oh, what do we do, money's now dried up. And so a lot of, there were a lot of expectations, as you might expect, in the community about, you know, when we're going to start all this. Manchester, Coyote Falls, I mean, they had to wait two years, they thought they were up for CFAP, and then they had to, they had to pass these big bond issues and they had to wait. So as a result, the commission is really not making any promises or, let alone statements, so that expectations don't get created because of situations like that. And you kind of understand it, so I wish that was a better answer, but there really isn't.
What about the interest rates? I know we're struggling with increases on the horizon here, most likely. When does our interest rate get locked in? With passage or?
Yeah, two answers to that question, two answers. The, the specific answer is it gets locked in when you quote unquote price the bonds, when, when you go out into the marketplace and your underwriter says, anybody want to buy these, and we're going to, we're going to have a deal for the purchase of your three hundred and fifty million dollars worth of bonds. On that day, the interest rates are set, and you enter into a contract called a bond purchase agreement, and you're done, or certificate purchase agreement if you're doing COPS. On that, and that's going to be a few months after the bond issue would pass, and so I mentioned Lake Local Schools, that deal, thirty-six million dollar deal closed a couple of days ago, they had a November bond issue, and so it's, you know, late February, so that's about, Berea was like the hundred, hundred-plus million dollar bond issue, I think they closed on March one. So right around this time is when you would close the deal, a couple of weeks before that, you would price the deal, and that establishes the interest rates. So for practical purposes, if we did a big bond issue, we're talking about this time next year, the interest rates would likely be set. Now, as I said, there's kind of two answers here, because before all of that, you guys, on that resolution number one, that we're targeting for, you know, June two thousand and twenty-two, you got to take a guess.
Take a shot at it.
What do you think it's going to be? And so, you know, you're going to want to, you know, guess with the advice of the Michael Purcell's and Michelle Hillstroms of the world, because they have their finger on the pulse of where the market is.
Depends who issues that day too.
And say what?
How much money's issued on the day you're going to price?
That can affect the interest rate.
There's only so many institutional buyers.
Yeah, right, right. And so if, but you're going to be making a guess, like in June, about what's going to happen in February, March, and so you're probably going to want to put a little cushion in the interest rate, just in case interest rates rise, or expected to rise between then and when you're actually going to price.
Can I, can I ask this too?
Yeah.
Because it's always, it's always a community question, I think I understand it, but I'm going to make sure.
Yeah.
So if, if we send this master plan to the OFCC, and they give us, and these are pretty good estimates, I'd imagine, they might tick up, they're subject to a cost increase, you know, but relatively, you know, ninety-five percent we're there. So they give us a cost, and say, so just say it's four hundred million now, and that's of the segment of the, that's the co-funded segment, so that's, we haven't talked, tacked on an LFI, we haven't tacked on PLA yet. So if it's four hundred million dollars, that's it, right? Like, because everybody says, oh, you know, costs are going to go up and up and up, yeah, but if the OFCC said it's a four hundred million dollar project, it's a four hundred million dollar project, what could go up, our LFI costs? Am I right, or?
Um, not necessarily, that's an important point, thank you for bringing it up, I know we're.
No, you're fine.
Negative, negative, in the negative two minutes that remain here, five seventeen, very important point. Working with a particular school district that passed a, an eighty million dollar bond issue and a PI levy that they converted into a COPS deal and all of that kind of stuff, it was great. Yay, awesome, this was two years ago. Issued everything in two thousand and twenty, and, and they're working with the, with the commission. And they just, they, they promised the voters that they would, they were going to do this and this and this and this and this, and they can't do it because of the costs that go up, they just can't do it. So, and it's a problem, as you might expect, because the voters are, are expecting.
That was an LFI, that was actually the co-funded segment?
Yeah, yeah, and so unless the, so unless the commission says, yeah, we're going to enter into like an amendment to the project agreement to increase the, the overall budget, and then we'll each pay our share, if they do that, then you're getting more state money, but you still need more local money. But let's say that costs go up, but the commission doesn't, doesn't agree to any sort of amendment to chip in more state dollars. Well, if the costs have gone up and, and you don't have any more money, you can't build it. You don't have, you don't have the money, you're going to have to find the money.
Weird time to laugh there, Rick.
Oh, yeah, sorry. You're my man.
Sick laugh.
I know, it's, it's just, it's a sad, like, oh no, this isn't happening.
Supports the fifty-four point nine million, not the fifty-nine point five million.
Well.
He's going to be living something.
Because you want to leave some on the, and that's, and that's a good point to end it with, is, is to leave some, leave, leave the ability to borrow a little, a little bit at least on the table for unforeseen cost overruns, because you don't want to have a situation where you promise something and you can't fulfill your promises because the costs have just gone up and the, the commission won't agree to it. But even if, again, even if the commission agrees, you still got to come up with your local share, where are you going to get that money? Go back to the voters again for, for more? Garfield Heights did that, but, but you don't want to do that, so, you know, you got to leave some in reserve, leave some borrowing power in reserve is good advice that Dr. Smilak just gave us.
Anything else for Rick? Thank you very much, sir.
Rick, thank you, thank you so much for that.
You got it.
Your presentation was interesting and entertaining.
Do you have any other brothers other than one that's on the radio?
I got a rock star brother, yes, he's, my younger brother is now retired, he's going around the country, literally, a rock star, tattoos all over his body, spiked hair.
This is not surprising, you, I would love to be at Thanksgiving dinner in your family, it has got to be like the most engaging, animated conversation, I love it.
They got, they have, they have good jobs, they, you know, rock stars and radio, yeah, man, I'm a bomb geek.
You probably pay their mortgage.
Pay for the airstream. My brother Brett is now going around the country.
It was very, very good.
Thank you all.
Thanks a lot.
Available anytime.
All right. Thank you, you the most.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and try to close this meeting.
Rick, is this yours? Don't forget, we're using.
We're using a bridge one.
Little things.
One of them.
Jeff.
Jeff.
I want to get this done.
So I'm going to adopt resolution twenty-two dash zero-two dash four-four to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to second to adopt a resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero-two dash